Everyone, please take their places. We do have a quorum. Okay. Before we start, there are two or three housekeeping issues I want to bring to your attention. After the last meeting, somebody wondered whether members of boards or committee who are not town meeting members have the right to speak. And the answer is yes. I mean, that's been the long tradition of this town. Now, it isn't as if like little bunny Foo Foo, they can come hippity-hopping up at every issue. But, they are allowed to speak on matters that are germane to their board or to their committee. Okay? And then recently, a question has arisen as to giving reports at town meeting. Well, of course, Article One says that's what we do, is we give reports at town meeting. And one of the reasons why these reports are given at town meeting and not handed out in some bundle is because this town meeting is not just for the town meeting members, it's televised to the town at large, and it does allow people living in the town to see what's going on, what's happening for various boards and committees, and that's why we read reports. And we'll continue to read reports. The third issue is this, as you can see, I have not been taken over by an alien, but I do not have my normal voice this evening, and it will probably get worse as things go on. So I have appointed Chet Stensel, longtime town meeting member, as my assistant moderator, and he will eventually be taking over as I fade into the darkness. So, on that, may we now have the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to comply with the United States of America, the true republic of its standing, our nation under God, indivisible, and天地正義, justice for all.
And because this is the annual town meeting, one of our traditions is to have a reading of the in memoriam those former town meeting members who have passed away in the last year. C. Harry Winchester, town meeting member, precinct three. Kenneth Murphy, town meeting member, precinct five. Henry J. Camasi Senior, town meeting member, precinct five. George Duvalja, town meeting member, precinct two. Herbert R. Pond, town meeting member, precinct four. Paulie Gautier, town meeting member, precinct four. Edward F. Sullivan, town meeting member, precinct four. Leonard W. Landry, town meeting member, precinct two. Robert L. Gettenberg, town meeting member, precinct two. Alan S. Dean, town meeting member, precinct one. Could we now stand for a moment of silence in their honor? Thank you. And now, before we get to Article One, I have to appoint counters. So over here, Jeff Mitchell and Ken Fairbanks, would you all please come up? In the middle, John Anderson and Paul Kosky. And over, on the left, I want Ellen Ezier and Beth Johnson. Thank you. And now, let us turn to Article One. To hear the reports of the Finance Committee, other town offices and committees, or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Hussey.
It's very important. Good evening. The Finance Committee has completed its review of the town's budgets, CIP, for fiscal 2015, which you have before you now. I would like to acknowledge the hard work by our committee, the Finance Committee, and I appreciate their commitment to adding value to the annual budget process. Everyone on our committee has taken a personal ownership interest in how we run our town, and although we didn't unanimously agree with all actions taken by town administration and the Board of Selectmen, we respect and appreciate their efforts in presenting to our committee a practical and forward-thinking budget. The $55.6 million budget before you now represents an $880,000 or 1.6 percent increase from the final 2014 budget. Highlights from the proposed budget and warrant articles include: initial savings and interest expense due to the recent upgrade in our bond rating, a real feather to the town; continued support in addressing our OPEB obligation, once again, we're being one of the leaders across the state in this area; continued support for our long-term roadway improvement plan, and I think we're starting to see the fruits of all the hard work by the DPW, the town, and all the funding that's coming in; completion of substantially all negotiations of our municipal union contracts resulting in fair wage increases balanced by modest benefits concessions by our municipal union employees, and thanks to all for that; a practical and cost-effective approach to funding a nearly $1 million fire department tower truck, which will happen over the next two to three years, and something that we definitely needed to do very immediately to take care of that issue. And finally, and I can't believe we're actually doing this, a comprehensive and specific school capital spending plan that, over the next two-plus years, will result in one new school, and every school in the district except our beautiful high school here, and including Bay Path Regional High School, being substantially rebuilt or renovated. My kudos to the school department, Joe Fahey, the school committee, to wrap this all together. We are really taking care of our capital needs on our biggest buildings in town. Hopefully, we'll be addressing the rest of our capital needs and our municipal buildings in the near future. However, due to reliance on only preliminary revenue assumptions from the state, our job on the Finance Committee is not complete. There are many more town funding priorities to be discussed and debated when final funding from Beacon Hill is determined, hopefully in the next month or so. And the Finance Committee is looking forward to deliberating these priorities on your behalf over the next several months. These priorities will be revisited at the fall town meeting. Warrant articles before you include annual fiscal housekeeping, approval of articles relating to reprioritizing elementary school renovations, as I just mentioned, which I would like to point out will have no incremental impact on the budget before you tonight. And roadway acceptances regarding the warrant articles, the Finance Committee takes the following positions. I'm going to add a couple of little notes to a couple of the articles as we go through them. Articles two through 20, Finance Committee votes yes. With a focus on Articles 14 through 17, which are somewhat complicated, they're moving CIP money around to basically reprioritize our school spending for capital improvements. Articles 21 and 24, this is regarding the Purple Heart Monument, we're actually going to be supportive and recommend approval for Article 24, which has a specific dollar amount of $5,500. And we're deferring to petitioner on Article 21, which we believe the intent is the same in terms of funding for the Purple Heart Memorial. That's our intention. So the Finance Committee is supportive of $5,500 to support the Purple Heart Memorial. Article 22, we recommend approval. Article 23, I understand is being postponed indefinitely, along with Article 28. Articles 27 through 20, excuse me, 25 through 27, we recommend approval. Articles 29 and 30, we recommend approval. Article 31, we do not recommend approval. Article 32 through 36, we are deferring to the petitioner. These are road additions. Finance Committee, although there's definitely a financial impact that could affect the town, we traditionally defer to the petitioner, and we rely on the town engineer and DPW head and the planning board, et cetera, et cetera, to make the right decisions for the town. And finally, Article 37, we vote to recommend approval, use of cemetery expendable trust funds. Respectfully submitted, Kevin Hussey, Finance Chair, and Kavanaugh, Vice Chair, James Bonifilio, Edward Coleman, Christopher Royan, and Kimberly Holstrom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm pleased to present the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen. On Articles One through Twenty, we recommend approval. Articles 21 and 24, the Board of Selectmen voted to defer to the petitioner, although in general conversation, the entire board is in full support of funding the Purple Heart additional pieces on the Purple Heart Monument. Article 22, the Board of Selectmen voted recommending approval. 23, by a vote of four to one, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Article 25, 26, and 27, the Board of Selectmen voted approval. Article 28, although we expect a postponement, the Board of Selectmen voted to defer. Article 29, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Also, on Article 30, Article 31, the Board of Selectmen voted not to recommend approval. On Article 32, the Board of Selectmen voted to defer to the petitioner. And just for your information, the hearing for the street layout was opened at a recent Board of Selectmen meeting, but because the planning board did not have the opportunity to take action, that hearing has been continued before the Board of Selectmen, so it will come back to us after the planning board takes action. Articles 33 through 36, we had lengthy street layout hearing meetings at our last meeting, so the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. Article 37, the Board of Selectmen voted to recommend approval. I'll just state, the board feels we're going in a positive direction. We appreciate the work you're doing, and this is submitted by myself as chairman, Robert Grossman, Vice Chairman, Stephen Simone, and Denise Brotherton, and Ken Holstrom. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. Ms. Jacobson.
Good evening, town meeting members. Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, School Committee, as well as other local elected and state officials who are here this evening. If you'd bear with me for one moment. Please let me know if you can see that. There we go. It is my pleasure to report on you, to you, on the activities of town administration during fiscal year 14 since the last annual town meeting. This overview is important, and it's provided to town meeting members to highlight what your tax dollars are used for regarding the administration and operation of town government, so that you, as town meeting members, can make informed decisions regarding the warrant articles before you this evening. During the past year, town administration undertook a number of new initiatives in addition to the implementation of ongoing programs and services that we provide. We continue to focus our efforts on maximizing resources, providing quality services and programs to the community, and identifying reforms that are cost-effective or result in efficiencies of operations. Just want to share with you some of the highlights of this past fiscal year. We completed the bond rating process, which we now have AA+ from Standard and Poor's and maintain our AA3 from Moody's. We completed negotiations with 16 town and school bargaining units for health insurance reform that resulted in savings of about $569,000 annually moving forward. The total healthcare savings were approximately $1 million annually. We completed negotiations with 11 bargaining units on the town side without arbitration, so I want to thank all of the unions and the collective bargaining units for working with us. We executed memorands of agreement with each of those bargaining units, and we're in the process of integrating all of those contracts internally versus going to outside counsel to do that. We are still working very hard to keep our labor, excuse me, our attorney fees down. We completed the purchase of the land for the Masonic Lodge for the middle school project, and we launched a social media initiative. We now have Facebook and Twitter. We're reaching a whole new audience with that. We've also executed two net meter and credit agreements that I will show you about in a minute. We've created and implemented a number of new community events. We have continued our legal and procedural review of the administrative bylaws, and I want to thank the administrative, I want to thank the bylaw committee for their work on that. We issued an RFP for the Scavone property, part of our property disposition process. We execute agreement with CM-DART, which is an organization dedicated to helping people with animals in a state of emergency. We completed the ascertainment process, so we now have our agreement with Charter in place. We developed a real property disposition strategy for the disposition of town-owned property to hopefully get that property back on the tax rolls. We've applied for and secured grants, which I'll go over with you, and we implemented an interesting software program called My Senior Center at the Senior Center, which helps us maintain adequate data for grants and for other programs at the Senior Center. So what do your tax dollars go for and why you're here tonight? Town administration does a number of different things: business development, community outreach, programs, economic development, emergency management, infrastructure, facility management, fiscal management, fleet maintenance, green initiatives, grantsmanship, legislative and public policy advocacy, public health, public safety, public services, public works, and training and certifications for our employees. We've made some significant strategic investments in the last fiscal year. The new middle school was approved by the voters since the last town meeting. The OPEB trust fund continues to be funded at a level of $500,000 a year. Ed Kuzinovich will get into that, but this is a critical piece for the town to stay involved in and to continue to do. We have made the health insurance reforms that I just indicated to you. We've increased our funding for the roadway improvement program. We now, in this year's budget, have $525,000. This is the second year in a row that we've been at that level of $525,000 a year for roadway infrastructure. This goes on top of the Chapter 90 funds. We've increased funding for snow and ice, recognizing that we live in New England and these winters aren't getting any better, as much as we wish they would. We have focused on facility management and maintenance of our public buildings. We will be coming up in the next year with a list of improvements that are needed at all of our public buildings over the next five years. We've also started on a vehicle maintenance and replacement plan to make sure that we start planning ahead over the long term for the replacement of our critical public works and public safety vehicles. We have a number of green energy initiatives, and we have begun the implementation of purchasing capital items through tax levy to reduce our reliance on borrowing and therefore cut down on our debt service. Our fiscal strengths that we're very proud of, we have written financial policies adopted in November of 2012 that have been implemented. This will be the second fiscal year budget that we're in now and heading into the third year of that. We've increased our free cash over the year. I just want to give you a couple of FY '14 figures. Ed will be giving you the FY '15 figures, but our increase of free cash, it's now at $3.99 million. We've increased the stabilization fund, which is at $2.264 million. Again, this is FY '14. We've increased our excess levy capacity, which is at $2.96 million. We've increased our reserves, and all of this has led to, again, a very, very strong, excellent bond rating of AA+ from Standard and Poor's, AA3 from Moody's. This decreases our borrowing costs, which I will show you in a minute, and it decreases our existing debt. I also want to point out that all of this has been accomplished while remaining in the lowest one-third, approximately one-third, about 35 percent statewide, as far as the average single-family tax bill. Our excellent bond rating from Standard and Poor's is actually the second-highest level that a municipality can achieve, so there's only one step above ours. This has led to reduced interest costs on two borrowings that we made on, we issued on April 1st. One was $11,400,000, long-term bond for the refinancing of the debt for Auburn High School. The other was $10 million in bond anticipation notes for the construction of the middle school. What does that mean for you as town meeting members and for the taxpayers in this community? Because of this improved bond rating, we had an improved interest rate of 1.96 percent. This is 55 basis points below the estimated 2.51 percent that we would have been paying had we not received the increase to the bond rating. Refinancing the high school debt is going to save the taxpayers $2,984,923 and 2 cents over the 10-year life of the loan. This is approximately $300,000 annually over 10-year term. Again, that's the refinancing of the long-term debt for the high school. The band notes, we received an interest rate of under 1 percent, which is really unprecedented. It was at 0.099 percent. This is also lower than the rate we would have received had we not received the AA+ rating from Standard and Poor's. The savings on an annualized basis is about $25,600. These are six-month bands, so we're actually saving $12,800 on that. In September, we're going to have $13.6 million in bands that are going to mature, as well as conversion of 1.5 million in non-school bands, which will be converted into bonds with a term of 20 to 25 years. Again, the higher bond rating will do the town very well on the interest rates and on our debt service come September. Just so you know, we're continuing to focus on getting grants. It's important that we subsidize what we have tax levy dollars with other funds. We, in this fiscal year alone, town administration applied for 25 grants for $1.8 million. Nineteen were awarded, five are still pending, one was denied. Total award was $461,981. Of that, four of those applications were regional, for a total of $455,882. Three of those were awarded, one was denied. $287,882 were awarded. And I just show you some pictures here of some of the different things that you may see around town that were funded with grant funds. The Department of Public Works has really grown since its inception in 2011. Very active roadway resurfacing and reconstruction program, multimillion dollars. Snow removal operations have saved the town money by bringing a lot of these in-house and utilizing different technologies to ensure that we are using equipment and materials at the best rate that we can get that. The street sweeping program, the leaf and brush pile, the Parks and Cemetery maintenance, facility management, which, again, in this case, I'm not talking about maintenance of our facilities in general, of our buildings, I'm talking about some of the construction projects that you see around town, and some of the smaller maintenance in our building are taking place within DPW. And also the fleet maintenance, the ability to maintain all of our fleet within DPW in the fleet maintenance department. And finally, sewer maintenance, the ability to maintain and upgrade our systems. From a public safety perspective on the fire department, fire and rescue services, critical services to this community, ambulance, fire, rescue. But in addition to that, I wanted to make sure town meeting members knew that the fire department's very involved in providing other services to the community. They provide programs to the seniors, they provide programs to the schools, they've provided programs to local businesses, they conduct Fire Safety Week, and they have a poster contest for children. On the police side, again, critical services every day, day in and day out for public safety, but they're also very heavily engaged in this community, and they give a lot back to the community. They have a bicycle helmet safety day through the Auburn Police Association, a 5K road race to raise money for scholarships, which was this weekend. A school safety officer who's in our schools, they're involved in the Special Olympics and various community events. And I couldn't let tonight go by without giving congratulations and a warm send-off to Sergeant Jay Johnson, who retired after 30 years on the Auburn Police Department last month. Health programs and initiatives. Board of Health runs a number of different programs that you can see here. Hazardous Waste Day, flu clinics, yard waste pickup, electronics take-back event, prescription drug take-back, Sharps Collection Program, anti-smoking programs, emergency planning for health issues, a new Attorney General's abandoned housing initiative to address those properties that are vacant and underutilized, and recycling programs. Community events, we continue with our Summer in the Park concert series. We left flyers out today so that everyone could see what concerts we have coming this year. Just want to make a note that they're all privately funded through donations from corporations. We also have our Enhanced Independence Day event that last year attracted 4,000 to 5,000 people to the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex. We have the Combined Fall Festival and Homecoming, the annual tree lighting event. We had our first annual holiday craft fair this year. We have our holiday lights in the parks, we have a skating rink. We have the Pappas Recreation Complex, which is a host to a number of different local events, as well as regional tournaments, which has a major impact on the local economy. Year-round recreation and culture programs, Senior Center programs and events, as well as programs and events at our library. Again, this year, we are on Facebook and Twitter, but we have tried to get into many different multiple areas to make sure that we're communicating to the residents of this community. We want you to know what we're doing. We want to make sure that people are aware of the programs that are going on, the events that are going on, and what's going on in Town Hall and town administration. So we use a lot of different venues for that. Just a reminder, if you haven't signed up, I say this all the time, but Code Red is a critical piece. Again, that is grant-funded. We have an EMPG grant that we've applied for three years in a row. It funds 50 percent of the Code Red for this community. The other 50 percent comes through local cable committee funds. Green initiatives. We are a green community. We are designated as such in June of 2012. We've been working very hard to implement the grant that we received, which was $165,500, to implement a number of different green initiatives to save on energy in our town and school facilities. We received a grant notification on Friday of a grant from the Department of Energy Resources for a part-time energy manager for $18,000, and that will provide us with a part-time person at 15 hours a week for one year to help us manage all of the green initiatives that we've taken on. We just signed yesterday memorandum of understanding with RH White and N-Star Gas to bring gas, a gas line, onto Central Street, right up to the entrance to Town Hall. So that, having the ability to tie into the gas at Town Hall, will save Town Hall and the Marion Building at Town Hall $4,000 a year in costs. We also signed two net meter and credit agreements. The first is with SolarCity. It's a 20-year term, projected annual savings of $150,129, projected total savings over the 20-year term of $3 million, little over $3 million. The second one is with RGS, which is RealGoodSolar. It was formerly Mercury, so we had to do an amendment to take on the new entity. This is a 20-year term with two five-year options, and you may recall that at last year, at the annual town meeting, you voted to allow us to enter into these agreements. The projected annual savings on the RGS is $209,028. The projected total savings, $6.2 million over a 30-year term, if we go ahead and exercise the two five-year options. So it's a $9 million savings in electricity costs over the 30 years. Business development, I'm not going to go through these, I just want to show you, there's a lot going on in business development in town. You can see it, you can see the work taking place, you can see some of our formerly vacant buildings being filled. Our Development Coordinating Group this year actually reviewed 40 plans and projects that were submitted to the town by entrepreneurs, developers, and businesses. These represent startups, expansions, and new companies in the town. We continue to work hard on public policy and advocacy. We provide written or verbal testimony on pending legislation that will impact the town. We participate on the Mass Municipal Association Policy Committee on Municipal and Regional Administration, CMRPC legislative meetings. We communicate on a regular basis with our state and federal delegation. And we're always looking at legislation, regulations, and new policies that potentially have an impact on the town, and when we need to weigh in, either in opposition or support of, we do. It includes the mass gaming, the medical marijuana regulations, zoning reform bill, energy bills, veterans' bills, housing bills, and economic development bills. And last but not least, strategic community partners. It's very important that we leverage our resources, not just through grants, but through partnerships with the community, so that we can continue to do new and exciting things for this town. Some of the partners that we've had this year include Southbridge Credit Union, Polar Beverages, Hometown Bank, Allied or Republic Waste, now Republic, the Friends of the Pappas Recreation Complex, the Boy Scouts, Home Depot, the Auburn School Department, and the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. This is a collaborative effort, everyone working together to try to fund, provide, and implement new programs and services for the residents of this community. So that's all I have. I'm going to turn this back over, but in conclusion, I just I'm going to turn this back over, but in conclusion, I just want to make sure that I thank the town meeting members, the members of the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee for your leadership and your guidance all through the year. And I also want to thank all the town employees and all the volunteers that we have on our boards and commissions for the dedication and commitment that you all have to the town of Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mark McEe, and the chairman of the School Buildings Committee for Auburn. I'm here to give you an update on where we've been over the last year now. Last year, we were here looking for several articles for funding and stuff that you graciously and enthusiastically and supported, which was later supported by the town votes. So to recap, tonight, we're not here for any other money. We're on budget and on schedule. That's good news. So as we move forward, actually, what you see right now is the rendering of the new entrance to the middle school. That's as we're coming up on it. So just to recap, last year, you approved a funding of forty-four million five hundred and eleven thousand two thirty-four, and that's with the state MSBA reimbursement of twenty million seven sixty-seven three twelve, and the town share of twenty-three million seven forty-three nine twenty-two. After the vote was approved, as Ms. Jacobson acknowledged, we had the, they went ahead and finalized the purchase of the parcel from the Masonic Lodge to add to the Randall School property, so we could move forward with the full project. The design progressed toward a hundred percent. It was through the interior spaces and finishes and stuff. In the fall, we put out RFPs to hire our CM, because we were at CM at risk on this one, and it was very active. We had, I think, sixteen at our walk-through, eight actually submitted proposals, and six came in for the interviews. We hired Fontaine Brothers, who was the general contractor for the high school build-out one. We did that some eight years ago now. Because we have a very aggressive schedule and stuff, we have to go out in pieces and stuff, and we had some early release packages that we went out on, site work, concrete, and steel for some of the long-need items. Went out in January and February this year. Site work actually started in March, and concrete is ongoing right at the moment. Trade contracts, under the one forty-nine A, we still have to bid about half the packages out as similar to the file sub-bid. The only difference nowadays is that the CM can write the scopes for those, so we can tighten up all the bids on those, on that public side. And next week, Fontaine is presenting the entire guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, to the School of Buildings Committee, so hopefully we'll show good savings on our construction budget when that comes in. On April seventeenth, we had our groundbreaking ceremonies. It was a bright, beautiful day, but it was cold. We pushed it to April, thinking we were going to get out of the weather, but we didn't. It was a good day. We had Auburn Middle School, had the band and chorus there performing, and then we had various kids from all the way from kindergarten up through middle school that were essay winners that read some of their essays. It was a nice event. Just as I said, site work's ongoing. Upper left-hand corner is some of the drainage areas that's ongoing at the moment, and then the other three pictures are concrete footings and foundations that are going on, and structural steel will start by June. So, and the entire construction projects will be done July of two thousand and fifteen, so only fourteen months from now. Our architect, Lamor Pagano, has done some nice renderings for us to help us when we were going through, picking out our interior finishes and stuff. This is a rendering of the main lobby as you're coming in from the bus drop-off entrance. It looks like all wood, but that's actually a plastic laminate panel, so it's a little bit more durable and cheaper than having wood panels. Coming down the left side is some display cases and trophy awards type of thing. Offices are on the right side, and there's a balcony in the back. This is looking from the balcony, looking back on it. Down into the space, the balcony runs across into the second floor of the classroom wing. Typical classroom, this is, you'll note that we have the smartboards in all the rooms. We have built-ins under the exterior walls for storage, there's built-ins along the wall that you don't see on the right side of the screen, where the teachers' wardrobes are, and other cabinets and stuff that are in all the rooms. You'll also notice the extra-high ceilings, about ten feet, and we have pendant light fixtures. These are uplit and downlit lighting, so it's a softer light in the rooms. And they're also on a light sensor, so the outside light is greater coming into the room. They actually dim, and it's part of the energy savings, the mass chip stuff that we're going for in the building. This is a rendering of the cafeteria, looking from the stage, looking out. In the windows in the background, you see a little courtyard that's outside the cafeteria there. On the backside entrance, which is the parent drop-off pickup area, and beyond that is the multipurpose field. As we turn around, this is the site, looking back at the stage. The floor is not sloped, actually, the ceiling's a little bit sloped, so it gives the effect of it, plus there's acoustic treatment in there and stuff. During schooltime, there's an opera pole partition that comes across this opening, so that the back of stage is the chorus room, and then the band room is actually behind that, so they can continue through lunchtime and overlap. The gym, real hardwood maple flooring throughout it. They have a, the bleachers are pulled back right now in this picture, but during game time, they can be pulled out to a normal court setting, and it's about two-hundred-and-fifty capacity seating. And then they get pulled out all the way, which takes it about a third of the way out of the court, and it provides a full-capacity seating for the population of the school. So for an assembly, all three grades can assemble at one time. Probably the biggest improvement that you haven't developed since the last time we were here was West Street. It's a little bit tough on this picture, but as you'll see on the school side, along here, and where the entrance is, there's a sidewalk now that's going to be going in from that entrance driveway all the way out to Southbridge Street. Southbridge Street already has sidewalks on both sides, and that intersection, that Southbridge and West Street, is lighted and pedestrian-controlled. The other change, too, is that from our school entrance, all the way to Southbridge Street, we're going to be a three-lane, we're going to make West Street three lanes. From about where the Randall School entrance is to the west is going to be two lanes heading west, with a dedicated lane to come into the, drop off and come into the school. It's about six school buses in length that can queue on that, and twelve to fourteen cars. Heading east, from about the Randall School entrance, heading east, it'll become two lanes all the way to Southbridge Street with a full dedicated left-turn lane onto Southbridge Street, which is five to six hundred feet long. And then the right lane will be a left-turn, right, straight-through, and right-turn lane, so in effect, have two lanes, being able to turn out onto Southbridge Street. And that's the majority of the traffic from all the traffic stations heading out. The other thing that we're putting in on this is a actual manual button from the fire station to control the intersection lights, as they do at Drury. Right now, it's an opticon, where it goes on a signal of the visual on the lights, but they don't reach that until they're around the corner, so this'll, as soon as they get in the trucks, they can start the motion to clear out the intersection for them. So to recap, next Tuesday, we'll be presented with a GMP from our construction manager. I fully expect that we're going to see savings on the bottom line, but because our early packages so far and the trade packages are all trending to the positive. As I said, steel erection begins in June, construction completes in July of two thousand and fifteen, just fourteen months from now. And then, right after that, the administration and faculty start to move in, and the students move in in late August. So in all, it'll be about a little over four years, from the time we started with MSBA to moving students in.
Good evening. Rick Ringgad, chairman of the Master Plan Team. The Master Plan Team was formed in October of two thousand and thirteen. With the people that you see on the screen, you can see it's a relatively large committee, and it's also a varied committee. We have people from all walks of town. The charge of the team was to recommend how the Tens Swanson Road facility will be used if the West Street facility is approved, which it was. And then we, the second part of the charge was to determine which of the elementary schools will remain in use should Tens Swanson Road be repurposed to a new middle school. Once the new middle school was approved on West Street, we looked at all the five remaining schools and made the recommendation to the school committee that Tens Swanson Road would be repurposed, following renovations, relatively minor renovations, to educate the grades three through five, and that was unanimously approved by the school committee. We also recommended that Bryn Mawr and Packard School's continue to be used as educational facilities for grades kindergarten through two, and that also was approved unanimously by the school committee. These recommendations came from two subcommittees. We actually broke into the two subcommittees, one looking at the educational part of it and the other looking at the existing building's conditions. Once we started looking at Swanson Road, we developed a budget, and it's changed as we go along. Some of the work is going to be done this summer, and the majority of the building work is going to be done next summer. The work that you see here, this budget, the main part of the budget, will be to expand the parking lot going off to the side into the soccer field, or into the practice football field, so that the buses can queue in front of it, and then the parents can drop their kids off on the side. Both will be dropping into a center aisle, so it should work pretty good. In the building itself, the main work is going to be done in the lower level, which, I don't know if you've been in there, but the lower level for the middle school is the cafeteria, the kitchen, locker room areas, and it's very, very small. It had a wood shop, so we're expanding the kitchen into the wood shop, bringing the cooler, the wak and coolers and the freezers inside, and then putting a small teacher dining room area. And then, a big part of the work in the basement is to upgrade the restroom facilities to the current codes. In the front of the building at the main entrance, we'll be putting a new security entrance in and redoing the office area, so that when someone comes in, there'll be a receptionist there that can buzz them in and out. And then in the classrooms, they will all get new whiteboards, new tackboards, new doors and hardware, and then painting and replacing the lockers with cubbies that are more suitable to the small kids. All of that has a budget of a million eight round numbers, and we would expect that it would be funded, or we hope to fund it, with repurposing articles from previous town meetings, which are money that was on the capital improvement plan for JB and Mary D. Stone, but the school committee wisely held that money until we found out if we were going to be building a new school, and that money can now be used for Swanson Road. So Articles fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are repurposing monies that was allocated to JB and Mary D. Stone, and then the two thousand and fifteen CIP and two thousand and sixteen CIP will have funding for it. And that should supply the million eight that we believe we need to do this project. In addition to the million eight for the renovations, the Facilities Department, Joe Fahey, is also doing ongoing maintenance and maintenance work on both the roof and the HVAC. And the school district has applied to the MSBA in their accelerated repair program, hopefully to share in that, which would bring the cost of that down. The goal of both the school committee and the Master Plan Committee has been to refurbish this school and get it ready for three through five without additional funding, and we believe that we can do that. Moving forward, once that's done, and the new middle school on West Street is open, we've refurbished Swanson Road. And once Mary D. Stone students are moved to Packard School, then at that point, the school committee, in all probability, would be about this time next year, or maybe even a little bit later, would start to consider how to turn the two buildings that are not going to be used, which are JB and Mary D. Stone, back to the town. We hope at our next meeting that we're going to appoint a subcommittee to look at other towns, talk to other towns that have decommissioned schools, to see what they did and see what they would do the same, what they wouldn't do. So that's where we are. It appears that we're running concurrently with the West Street School, and we should be able to, in September, when they move in the West Street, we should be ready at Swanson Road. Thank you.
Thank you all. Are there any other committees that wish to report? Seeing none, Article Two. To determine what sums of money the town meeting will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide for and appropriate, to freight charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and one, July for two thousand and fourteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, or act on anything relative thereto. Oh, I suppose let's get the meeting, I mean, let's get the motion on the floor first. Do I have a motion? Paul, there's a motion. Thank you.
...accounts which total any specific appropriation when requested by a department, and the committee feels such transfer is in the best interest of the town.
Do I have a second? We do. Now, Mr. Kazanovich, if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Before we get into the details of Article Two on the operational budget, I just want to highlight a change that was made since the mailing of the town meeting warrant to each and every one of you. If you look at this overhead behind me, under excess and deficiency, the amount that was included in your packet identified a balance of $30,065.4. That balance is now $14,761.49. In the end of April, we had a bond sale April 1, and as a result of that, we forced a premium. And under the current regulations, we're allowed to offset our issuance costs for those, that bond sale and that band sale against the premium. We knew what the premium was as of April 1, but we didn't have all of the costs, all the invoices from the banking agencies as well as the rating review agencies pertinent to that bond issue. Those became known end of April, and I thought it would be important to reflect those actual costs and show you a true available balance rather than do it at a fall town meeting, since there are other funding articles being requested tonight that may require a portion of that $14,000. So with that, the total budget before you tonight is asking for total appropriations of $55,606,283.72. On the revenue side, to cover that recommended budget, we have local receipts of $7,739,443.74. We have state aid cherry sheet revenue of $10,303,338. This is the budget is proposed by the governor. I can tell you that the House budget gives us about $40,000 more, but the Senate budget and Conference Committee numbers won't be known probably till late May, sometime in June, and we will come back with a final number at a fall town meeting. The tax levy being proposed is $34,399,263.94. The debt exclusion for the high school, this is the new amount required to be raised outside of 2.5, is a result of our recent refunding bond issue, would now require that we raise for our debt and interest payment on that new 10-year issuance, $1,285,058.33. First year debt exclusion for the middle school, this covers the cost, net cost, of the amount of money required to borrow on a short-term basis. We currently have about $13.6 million of short-term notes to cover our cash flow needs for the middle school. Our September payment, FY15 obligation, required to be raised is $55,160.9. Now, the debt, the interest payment is substantially higher than that, but we forced a premium, and we're going to use that, we're required to use that as an offset to net that out to minimize the amount that we're required to raise through taxation. Available funds to meet the recommended budget, $1,838,781.11. Total revenue sources of $55,621,045.21, leaving an unobligated excess balance of $14,761.49. Our excess levy would then be $3,248,464.06. If you take a comparison of current year to FY15, total revenue grows by 1.63%, or $894,000. Total appropriations on the expense side is being asked, under the recommendation, increase of 1.61%. Our local receipts, our level funding, we will have a better handle on our budget to actual once we get to June 30. Our cherry sheet revenue is up $246,917, or 2.46%. Once again, that's the governor's proposed budget revenue numbers. Tax levy up 3.04%, or $1,015,870.69. That does include new growth, which is not part of 2.5. So our actual tax levy required net to cover our operational side of the budget is about 1.74%. Our debt exclusion, down 11.08, or $160,147.50, and once again, a cost to fund a band sale on the middle school, $55,160.9. Available funds is down $263,000 and change, or down 12.52. Once again, total revenue up 1.63. Total appropriations up 1.61. In your packet, you have a finance-approved FY15 budget that's identified in green. The moderator will read these departments shortly after the presentation by school superintendent. These are the numbers that he will be referring to. Once again, total department request of $55,606,283.72. Formulation of the 15 budget is built on the premise of the following. Once again, since the financial strategies were adopted, they are incorporated into the entire budgetary process. This is year two of a three-year plan to eliminate the use of overlay surplus to fund our operational expenses. Historically, we used a $200,000 or $250,000 value annually. That's not good sound business practice. We have a plan to reduce that down to zero. FY15 would be the last year to utilize those funds of $65,000. Once again, this is a final year plan to utilize free cash to fund our operational side of the budget. We are also using $65,000 in FY15. We are utilizing as part of the financial strategy and adoption of the plans, we're using 1/10 of 2.5 for our capital budgets, so we don't have to rely on bond proceeds going forward to fund 100% of our capital needs. This budget uses a conservative estimate of new growth of $400,000. I can tell you our five-year average is running at $559,000. We have every reason to believe that we're going to meet the conservative number that we're estimating at this point in time. We've continued to meet our commitment to funding OPEB, that's Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability. This is the third year that we've appropriated $500,000 towards a $77 million actuarial liability. I can tell you this item is getting a lot of discussion as being talked about through MMA, through the Commonwealth of Mass, through the United States. This is not just a Massachusetts commitment, this is a national commitment. This is being pushed by our rating agency. This is something that we may be committed to on a mandated basis in years to come. Right now, it's not a mandate. We chose to be proactive. I can tell you, as a result of meeting this $500,000 obligation, it helped us ascertain a AA+ rating through Standard and Poor's, which ultimately saves the taxpayers' money on an annual basis over the next 10 years relative to our refunding bond issue. As the town manager has identified, that savings is 2.9, or close to $3 million over the 10-year period. This budget is asking for a one-time utilization of stabilization funds of $450,000 to meet a acquisition through the capital portion of the budget for a new fire ladder truck, total cost of about $900,000. This budget maintains our cash balances in all other reserve and trust accounts, and there is no earmark in this budget for stabilization. We want to wait till the final numbers come in from the Commonwealth. We want to wait for our final numbers to come in for local aid and other revenue sources to make a recommendation that we can bring at a fall town meeting. Once again, this budget reflects the governor's state cherry sheet numbers. The House did release its budget on April 9. It would earmark to Auburn an additional $44,194 more in cherry sheet state aid, over and above what the governor has proposed. This budget uses approximately 1.85% of levy out of possible 2.5. I'm sorry, I said 1.74 before. It uses 1.85. It increases excess levy from current year to FY15. It increases that by $307,372. And once again, we're using a conservative estimate on our local receipts that will hopefully lead to an increase in our free cash, not only for 14, but for 15 as well. This budget provides for a 2% wage consideration for all Bylaw employees. This budget covers all monetary obligations for 11 town and seven school bargaining groups. The budget recommends and meets all contractual and debt obligations as currently recognized. This budget meets all current employee benefit obligations. The budget recommends a total capital improvement plan of $2,715,796. And as a result of the refunding bond issue, in FY15, the total savings to you, the taxpayers, that we don't have to raise is $301,204.17. And that's a direct result of our increased bond rating of a AA+ from Standard and Poor's. Once again, this leaves $14,761.49 unobligated is currently presented tonight. As function of government, if you look at a pie, here's how money is being recommended for appropriation. Education, which includes Auburn School Department as well as any outside articles relative to the school department, including Bay Path, the appropriation represents 43.33%. Public safety, which includes fire and police, represents 11.87%. Public Works, DPW, represents 7.89%. Inspection and Economic Services, JSHI of 1%, 0.80%. General Government, 6.21%. Solid Waste, 1.71%. Debt and Interest, 6.53%. Human Services, 1.62%. Employee Benefits represents 15.30%. And Assessments, Offsets, Overlay, CIP, and Articles of 2.6 million represents 4.73%. On the tax levy revenue, the total tax levy base is, under the FY15 budget, is $36,339,246.83. That does not mean we are taxing to that level. Our 2.5 allowable growth, as a lot of the prop 2.5, means we can add $908,481.17. We are not using all of that. The added new growth, conservative, is $400,000. The total levy limit, using all of those resources, is $37,647,728. We would be taxing at a level of $34,399,263.94. That utilizes approximately 91.37% of the allowable levy that would be allowed to tax, and would leave excess levy of approximately $3.2 million. These are all of the available fund. Revenue sources totaling $1.8 million. As you can see, second from the bottom, stabilization, one-time use, $450,000. Once again, cherry sheet state aid, governor's numbers, $10.3 million. Our local receipts, we are estimating what we received last year of $7.7 million. I can tell you that number is going to be higher than that when June 30 rolls around, but at this point in time, we want to remain conservative for a number of reasons. Number one, we have not received 100% of our revenue. Springtime is a strong cycle for revenue to come in, primarily from motor vehicle excise tax and other revenue sources. Until such time, we want to remain conservative. We use this, quite honestly, as a financial strategy to, A, make a recommendation at a fall town meeting, but also to consider any growth in areas of free cash that would be certified as of June 30. Here's a breakdown of our revenue. Our tax levy revenue that we raised represents about 61.85% of the total amount raised, followed by cherry sheet revenue, representing 18.52%, or about $10.3 million. Our local receipts is third, at 13.91%, representing $7.7 million. Our available funds represents 3.31% of our total revenue, at $1.8 million, and our debt exclusion, raised solely outside 2.5, represents 2.41% at $1.3 million. I'm happy to report that we do have a balanced budget. Total revenue in recap is $55,621,045.21. Once again, total expense, $55,606,283.72, leaving an unobligated balance of $14,761.49. Mr. Moderator, that concludes my presentation for Article Two.
Thank you, Mr. Kazanovich.
Thank you.
Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee, and those watching from home. On behalf of the School Committee, I thank you for the opportunity to provide an update regarding the School Department's request for FY15. Lee Colon said, "Success is a reflection of your commitment to excellence." And what I hope that you will see through this brief presentation this evening is indicative of the School Department's commitment to excellence that we have had for a number of years now, and I hope that you will also see that we are recognizing some really significant improvements. Our overarching goal is to respond to needs based on data. What are listed here are the core values, and most recently, some of you actually participated earlier this fall in a review of our strategic planning coming up with a new one. What we've done since then as a design team has looked at these core values and have recommitted to them. But against every question that we ask, the backdrop always was, how will this impact students and their achievement? Obviously, safe and respectful environments are critical. We center all of our decision-making around students. Our expectations are high for students as well as for all of us in the schools. We're dedicated to continuous improvement, and we believe critically important that there be equitable opportunities for all students. The priorities that drove our decisions as we began this process, actually in the early fall, student safety is of the utmost importance. Student safety is of the utmost importance. The Auburn Middle School building project, as Mr. Imzy reported earlier this evening. Our commitment has been to maintain open lines of communication with the entire Auburn community, and I thank you again for your generous support of that. In addition, as reported by Mr. Ringardt, we have a renovation ongoing in the planning stages for 10 Swanson Road. Some of it has begun to ready that building for grades three to five, also in the fall of 2015. We're committed to maintaining class sizes at appropriate levels. Student achievement is at the core of what we do. We want to maintain our textbooks and make sure that they stay current. And also, our commitment to the new educator evaluation system, it actually began in earnest last school year. Additionally, we've made a commitment to technology, and you'll see actually as part of our capital improvement plan that we will be implementing a one-to-one iPad initiative at grades eight and nine next school year. We had a pilot this year in grade eight. It went extremely well, and this actually comes at the recommendation of the one-to-one digital learning team that the School Committee constituted last spring. Our commitment to continuous improvement is something that we have embraced for a number of years. High-quality professional development. We believe that the best way to help our students improve is to put the best possible adults in front of them in the classroom, and that requires ongoing training of our dedicated staff. A strategic plan that is in process now, but also our school and district improvement plans. And then finally, also making sure that we continue to offer advanced placement offerings, both in terms of participation as well as qualifying scores. And you'll see a little later that we are reaping success in that area as well. We made assumptions, as we do each year in the budgeting process. We begin earlier before any state figures are known. We made an assumption that our federal grants will remain at their current appropriations. Medicaid funding would remain also at its current appropriation of approximately $124,000. Circuit breaker funding, this pays for extraordinary special education costs, would remain at the 60%. School choice, this actually has been increased slightly by School Committee vote, so there were 46 in total, 31 at the high school, and 15 at Auburn Middle School. We've maintained the busing fee of $100 per student, based on criteria, up to a maximum of $250 per family. And also, you'll see that in an effort to minimize the impact of this budget on the taxpayers of Auburn, we have tapped all available revolving accounts. The budget request for the School Department is in total $22,980,672. And this actually varies slightly from the amount that you see in the town warrant. The School Committee actually met last evening and made a reduction in it, in that amount request. And that's as a reflection of, as information becomes available to us, we had recently two very late retirements, those are reflected in here, along with our commitment to transparency. This represents an approximately 2.9% increase over the approved rate of FY14. This chart here shows a six-year review of the total budget requests in terms of the dollar amount and percentage increase. In total, the average annual increase has been 1.85%. New staffing requests. And purposely over here on the right-hand side, you can see that it notes the core value connection. Believing that if we have core values and overarching goals, we want to make sure, again against that question, how will this impact students? How is this actually tied to the core values that we have set? At the elementary schools, we're seeking to increase the number of hours for our instructional assistants in ABAs. Those are designated by special education IEPs. What we have done, this actually will ensure that these individuals are there for the entire student's day, so we're just expanding hours by 15 minutes per day. We're also going to be looking to add two ELL tutors. We have approximately 72 students across the district whose first language is not English, and they are at varying degrees of English proficiency. That actually addresses the equitable opportunities and high expectations. But additionally, we had the Department of Education last spring came in and did an audit, and cited that we needed to provide more hours of support to identified students. At Mary D. Stone, we're looking to add a special education instructional assistant. This is to address identified needs of incoming preschoolers, and that addresses both safety and high expectation core values. And then two inclusion assistants at that school as well, one for each of grades one and two. Again, addressing equitable opportunities to ensure this consistency in programming across our primary schools, as well as high expectations. The next one, the request for a fourth-grade teacher, is all about student-centered decision-making, and this is in keeping with the School Committee's practice and expectation that class size is being maintained at 25 students or less at the elementary level. At Bryn Mawr School, to address the needs of incoming preschoolers, we'll be adding two special education IAs, again, in terms of safety and high expectations. And then also a special education teacher. We have an initiative across the district, back to that comment about high-quality professional development, on co-teaching. The best environment for students who have special needs is in that which is least restrictive. The law requires that, but also, we're providing training to teachers to be sure that our students are exposed, all students are exposed, to the entire core curriculum with the supports that they need. At Auburn Middle School, that's an expansion of that 15 minutes a day. And then also the inclusion of a media iPad specialist. We'll be opening the new middle school next year, but as I said, we've got the iPad initiative that will begin next year in earnest. And then also finally, addressing the core value of equitable opportunities, is increasing the art teachers' time in District Two at Pacha Chag and Mary D. from 0.8 to 1.0. In total, that values $342,98. However, we did eliminate, through the budgeting process, it's a regular item on the School Committee's agenda, a one-to-one nurse that's no longer needed due to shifting student needs. So in total, the request of new staffing is $306,15. Such increases reflect the strong commitment of the school district to work with the town. We are one unit, and when we work together, I think everyone benefits the most. But we've also been able to maintain our commitment to our mission, which is, what we need to do is to educate and prepare our students for the challenges and opportunities of a changing world. What I'd like to highlight next are some of the accomplishments. There's much that I'm proud of from all of the people that are working in the Auburn Public Schools, and I extend that to all of you because it is not a singular effort. It is never about one individual or even a handful. It really is an effort between the home, the school, and the community. So I thank you for your past and hopeful future support as well. So in keeping with rigor, as I had indicated earlier, we have increased significantly the number of advanced placement offerings, but also done training with teachers around the pre-AP, getting students to a level so that they're prepared to actually engage in truly rigorous coursework. The co-teaching and inclusion initiative we have underway, the park readiness, the iPad integration, and the implementation of the Common Core. I would be remiss if I did not point out the great success of our We the People student body at the AP government from the high school. They went down to Washington, DC recently and represented all of Massachusetts, having won the competition at Harvard University back in January. And we are extremely proud of them, as I am and all you are, I'm certain, anytime that our students really accomplish at great levels. In terms of relevance, we have a committed effort to provide job-embedded professional development that's really focused on our major initiatives. It's impossible to address every initiative every year, so we try to really focus our time and energy. It focuses here on the district and school improvement plan, as well as the strategic plan. And this shows a photo of School Resource Officer Brian Kennedy in reading with students. In terms of relationships, as indicated by many of the others who have presented this evening, it really is a collaborative effort that takes place. In addition to the work that is ongoing at the department and administrative level, we have a strong commitment to community service learning, and the students in our schools reap the benefit of numerous civic organizations, but also many of the departments in town, whether it's the Fire Department or the Police Department, whether it's the DPW, and I hate to begin listing them at the potential exclusion of any, but it really is a reciprocal and most positive of relationships. Responding to needs based on data, whatever information it is that we collect, we, as a School Department, have an obligation to say, what is this data? What is it telling us, and what do we need to do to improve? Obviously, our most important question being, how will this impact students and their achievement? These are students from the International Club, providing an authentic lunch. Recent college acceptances. When students graduate from high school, it is the pinnacle of their educational career in the public schools, and it's a reflection of the efforts that take place from preschool all the way through grade 12. These are some of the colleges. We're proud of all of our students. Some choose to go on to work, some choose to go on to the military, and others choose to go on to college. I think you would agree that many of the colleges represented here, whether it's Boston College, American University, New York University, Brown, UVM, or any of those listed here, are ones that really indicate that our students are excelling and achieving at high levels. As indicated, we'll have the one-to-one iPad initiative next year. Our goal is always to keep our students on the cutting edge and to be sure that they can compete competitively, not only with their peers locally, but we're in a very global society. As all of us know, students is a very technological age in which our students live and work, and we need to, as educators, be sure that we're living in the children's future as opposed to having them live in our past. Next year, we'll have grades eight and nine. The following school year, as a result of the school building project, we will have an iPad one-to-one initiative program in place from grades six through 12. And we've done an awful lot of work, and we'll continue to work with our staff to be sure that they are prepared to engage with that. Auburn High School next year will offer 15 advanced placement classes. Those are listed here for your review as well. For you to note that this school year, there were nearly 400 AP classes that were taken in by a student body that numbers slightly less than 700. It's really pretty impressive, I think. It shows that our students not only are stepping up to the challenge, but that our staff are supporting them in that, as well as their families at home. Our students continue to shine musically, artistically, and athletically. They win many local and state competitions. We had the return of the Rocket Marching Band this year. This photo actually shows on a night when they were first debuting that it wasn't the best of weather conditions, but it's great to have them back in their beautiful uniforms. Oops, excuse me. Our School Resource Officer is indicated, as provided through the Auburn Police Department, as well as before and after-school programs that we have in place through grades K to five, and clubs that are offered through grade 12. We continue to offer and expand upon the STEM offerings, the science, technology, engineering, and math that are added. And we've had Auburn Middle School, I reported to you previously, as an innovation school. They're designated as a STEM academy. We had Governor Patrick and Secretary of Education Malone out this past fall to make a visit to Auburn Middle School. And Auburn High School was recently notified that they have been awarded an innovation grant for the freshman academy that they intend to implement this coming fall. Recently, a STEM team from the high school did a presentation to the School Committee and talked about not only the robotics club, but the engineering classes that they are adding, and also the data that we have at all levels that we're constantly looking at to be sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure our students have every opportunity available. The strong collaborations with the town, when we work together, everyone benefits. This is probably one of the most visible signs of such a collaboration, it's between the School Department, the town DPW, but other town departments as well, and Bay Path in putting this together out on the bleachers here at Auburn High School. Our safety advisory team continues their efforts at school, police, and fire, and they meet on a regular, monthly, sometimes more often, basis. The Fire Department has provided CPR and AED, you see them here, doing a presentation to some primary grade students. And the reciprocal and positive relationship we have with the departments, as well as town's administration, is of benefit to the entire community. Being committed to continuous improvement as we are, I had indicated earlier that we met, there were about 125 of us who came together on a Saturday in November to answer the question, what do we need to do to ensure that the Auburn Public Schools continues to provide opportunities that our children can continue to succeed in the future? And the work of that team is ongoing. This shows most of those who were in attendance that morning. And at an upcoming meeting of School Committee, we'll be providing a draft of that plan. On behalf of the students, I know Mr. Imzy has reported on this, but I want to extend again, as I did earlier, a sincere thank you to you. It was a year ago this meeting when you first gave your support to send this to the voters. And as the photo, the renderings that Mr. Imzy shared, it really is going to be a state-of-the-art facility for our students that will open in the fall of 2015. So Tom Landry said, "Setting a goal is not the main thing. It is deciding how you will go about achieving it and staying with that plan." So what I've shared with you tonight are some of the goals that we have, but hopefully I've shared with you some of the achievements that we've accomplished as a result of our commitment to that plan. The continuous improvement of our schools is the commitment of the Auburn School Committee, the Auburn Leadership Team, and all of us within, and that includes all of you, because I think we all agree that our students deserve nothing less than the very best that we can offer them. We are Auburn. This banner hangs proudly overlooking the cafeteria of Auburn High School. And I can tell you that on behalf of the Leadership Team and School Committee, we're very proud of the work and the progress that is being made, and I hope sincerely that each of you is as well. And I thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Mr. Kasenovich?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to make a correction to, part of a presentation where I indicated a discrepancy in the tax levy. I apologize for that. This budget is utilizing 68% of two and a half, or 1.70%. I indicated 1.74, 1.1, 1.85. I apologize for that. The discrepancy had to do with the amount of money required to be raised. In accordance with the policy, 1.25% going to the operational side of the budget, 2.5% or 1/10 of 2.5% going towards our capital, and the balance going towards our debt and interest required for the Bay Path Vocational Regional High School. Total amount, once you back off new growth, new taxation, is $615,876.9. Total allowed under Prop 2.5 is $908,481.17. That's 68% of that number, or we're taxing at a level of 1.70%. I can tell you, last year, when we made a present to town meeting, we were upwards of that level as well. The final numbers for 14 came down to a level of 1.14% of 2.5. So this number is not a final number. It's a number used as a funding mechanism of tax levy for the budget that's being presented to you tonight. I can tell you that number will change, probably go down, as a result of final revenue numbers that we will receive from various revenue sources that we will recognize as of June 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kasenovich. And now, we will have the reading of the budget. On page 19, we'll use the budget summary, and I'll read each of the lines, and where anywhere where there is a question, somebody should say "Hold," and we'll mark it to the end. Is that clear? Moderator total, $296. Selectment total, $10,987. Executive Office of Town Manager, $344,661. Finance Committee total, $815. Reserve total, $190,000. Finance Department total, $563,86. Law total, $120,000. Human Resources, $48,398. Information Technology, $142,334. Town Clerk total, $153,424. Election total, $24,786. Appeals total, $12,104. Town Hall total, $30,200. General Services total, $1,316,560. School, excuse me, school, $22,980,672. School, $22,980,672. Emergency manager, $10,000. Bay path, $983,662. DPW department total, $4,385,724. Solid waste total, $953,445. Development inspection, $430,312. Department of Public Services, $790,651. Youth commission, $110,000. Historical commission, zero. Matured debt, $2,845,662. Interest, $785,100. And the bottom total is $52,342,248. And there was a hold on school.
Mike Hammond, Precinct 2. I'd just like to know what an iPad integrator is, what that's going to do, and also on the grade four teacher. The following year, the enrollment seems to drop back down. We're going to be in a new school. Do we really need to hire that position at this time? Can we get some efficiencies mentioned?
To the first point, the media iPad specialist, the middle school, the only school in the district that currently has a librarian or media specialist is the high school. So we're looking to bring on a media specialist for the middle school. This individual also has responsibility for the integration of the iPads across all of the eighth grade, and particularly for the one-to-one, but will also support at grade six and seven as well. In terms of the grade four teacher at...Julia Bancroft was your question? So based on projections for next year, we actually had added a third-grade teacher last year. The projection of students coming up from second grade has them over 100, so that's in keeping with school committee practices to request, to be sure there were under 25 students.
But in 2016, doesn't it decrease a little bit? Are they going to be in the middle school, so they're going to be able to overlap with some of the teachers?
There may be some efficiencies that we can gain at that point, but, you know, we really make decisions based on a year-to-year basis, so this is really to address the needs for next year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have another one.
That's it? Okay, then, all those in favor of the budget, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed, the budget passes. Okay? And we now have Mr. Stensel, who's got a better voice than I have, hopefully. Okay. Go ahead, Chuck.
Article three. To see if the town meeting will approve the five-year capital improvement plan for the town manager, information technology, town clerk, planning, town hall, police, fire, engineering, highway, sewer, cemetery, senior center, elder affairs, library, parks, and schools, as stated on pages 65 through 70, inclusive on the Town of Auburn fiscal year 2015 budget, the annual town meeting warrant. And further to approve an appropriation of $2,715,796 to fund the fiscal year 2015 Capital Improvement Program as specified on pages 64 through 70, under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendations, and to raise the sums by borrowing, inappropriating a sum of $560,381, $560,381 from general fund revenues, $28,028 from CIP Expendable Trust, $77,387 from ambulance proceeds, $450,000 from stabilization, and $115,000 from sewer enterprise retained earnings. It also moved that the town meeting authorized the borrowing of $1,485,000 for a period of up to 10 years for the items identified in the five-year capital improvement plan. Also that the school department may, in its discretion and to the limits of its appropriations, transfer money between line items identified on page 70, under the Finance Committee Recommendation column, as deemed necessary. Further, that prior to the purchase of all road vehicles shall be marked on both front door panels as property of the Town of Auburn for official use only, and have a permanently affixed town seal, and that the expenditure of funds so appropriated shall be under the directions of the Chief Procurement Officer of the town or school department. Mr. Proudie?
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 3 be approved, as read previously by you.
Is there a second? There is a second. Discussion? I don't see anybody's hand up. This is a two-thirds article. So all those opposed, please raise their hand. All those in favor? It passes. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending on June 30th, 2015, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year or act on anything relative to. Is there a motion?
Larry Ciocolo, Precinct 3. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue to be received during the financial year beginning July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015, and to issue a note or notes that may be given for a period of less than one year.
Is there a second? There is a second. This is also a two-thirds vote. So first of all, is there anybody opposed to this? I don't see anybody. All those in favor, please raise your hands. It passes. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs' formula grant funds, which funds the board determines to be beneficial to the town, and to authorize the expenditures of any money received as a result of such applications or act on anything relative to. Mrs. Proudie?
Before I read my article, and so that we don't have to come back again, the Articles 3 and 4 that needed a two-thirds vote should either be unanimous or counted number, or they'll send it back from the state. Sorry. I'm probably the only one that's been here longer than you. And I know that is the case. Either a count...
They were both unanimous, yes.
Pardon me?
They were both unanimous.
Very good. I figured they were, but... Article five, I move that the town meeting vote to establish the Board of Selectmen, to authorize, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen to submit applications for any available state or federal funds, including Department of Elder Affairs' formula grants, which funds the board determines to be beneficial to the town and to authorize the expenditure of any money received as a result of said applications.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any? Any hands up? All those in favor, please raise their hands. All those opposed? The vote, it's a unanimous vote. That was only a majority, by the way, but it was unanimous. Article six, to see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid, or at assessed value under special circumstances, any properties which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax foreclosure proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore, or act on anything relative to. Is there a motion?
Ellen Ganley, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction or by sealed bid or at an assessed value under special circumstances, any properties which the town may have acquired or may hereafter acquire through tax title foreclosure proceedings, and to sign, acknowledge, and deliver in the name and under the seal of the town deeds therefore.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article seven. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensatory balance agreements during the fiscal year 2015, as permitted by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposit in banks in return for banking services or act on anything relative thereto. Mrs. Ethia?
Ellen Ethia, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town treasurer and the town collector to enter into compensatory balance agreements during the fiscal year 2015, as permitted by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or any other enabling statute. If voted, this would permit the treasurer to maintain specific sums of money and deposits in banks in return for banking services.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article eight. To see if the town meeting will vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, and Chapter 44, Section 53D, or act on anything relative to.
Joan Calberly, Precinct 4. And I move that the town meeting vote to establish or renew revolving funds for various town and school programs as identified in the attached.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article eight. To see if the town meeting will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
I'm Mary Ellen Paquette, Precinct 2. I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the period commencing July 1st, 2014, and ending June 30th, 2015.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 10. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate from available funds, a sum of money, if it becomes available, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Chapter 90, bond issue, proceeds to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth General Laws, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes?
Jeremy Poschus, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate from available funds, a sum of money if it becomes available, from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Chapter 90, bond issue proceeds to be used for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Commonwealth General Laws.
Is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 11. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $500,000 to the other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, or act on anything relative to. Yes?
Greg Bowling, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $500,000 to the other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any? All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article 12. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $124,457.23 for the Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating budget for the fiscal year 2015, to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and educational services for significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district of special needs students, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Jerry Balan, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $124,457.23 from the Medicaid receipts within the general fund revenues to the Auburn School Department operating by the fiscal year 2015 to fund supplies in medical, therapeutic, and education services for the significantly disabled special needs students, as well as tuition and transportation to and from outside placements or within the district of special needs students.
Is there a second? There is. Any questions? Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 13. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate $7,118.87, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreational Trust Fund, to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health and recreational activities at Auburn High School Gymnasium, and related facilities, and equipment, or act on anything relative to it. Is there a motion?
Robert Garrett, Precinct 5. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $7,118.87, which is the interest earned by the Auburn High School Gymnasium Health and Recreation Trust Fund, to offset school department costs at Auburn High School in support of community health, recreational activities at the high school gymnasium, and related facilities and equipment.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It is a vote. The next four articles are two-thirds. Article 14. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend the CIP program Article 3 of the May 6, 2010 annual town meeting as follows... of the May sixth, two thousand ten annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $23,356.18 from the Julia Bancroft School and $127,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $150,356.18 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road or act on anything relative thereto. Mrs. Holstrom.
Kim Holstrom, Precinct five. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May sixth, two thousand and ten annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $23,356.18 for the Julia Bancroft School and $127,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $150,356.18 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road.
Is there a second? There is a second. This is a two-thirds vote. Any discussion, first of all? Or questions? Not seeing any, then? All those opposed? Please raise your hand. I don't see any, all those in favor? Then it's unanimous vote. Article fifteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Programs Article Three of the May fifth, two thousand eleven annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $160,000 from the Julia Bancroft School and $165,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $325,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Frost.
Ken Frost, Precinct four. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May fifth, two thousand eleven annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $160,000 from Julia Bancroft School and $165,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $325,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There is a second. This is the two-thirds vote also. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The vote was unanimous. Article sixteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Programs Article Three of the May first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $75,000 from the Julia Bancroft School and $185,000 from the Mary D. Stone School and add $260,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road or act on anything relative thereto. Mrs. Granger.
Barbara Granger, Precinct three. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May first, two thousand and twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $75,000 for the Julia Bancroft School and $185,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $260,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? This again is a two-thirds vote, so all those opposed, please raise your hands. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Article seventeen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the CIP Program Article Three of the May seventh, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $177,000 for the Julia Bancroft School and $117,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $294,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Robert Gallow, Precinct five. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May seventh, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of funds of $177,000 for the Julia Bancroft School and $117,000 for the Mary D. Stone School and add $294,000 for the renovation of 10 Swanson Road.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? This is a two-thirds vote also. So all those opposed, please raise your hand. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Article eighteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to accept Section four of Chapter seventy-three of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six and all subsequent amendments thereby increasing the exemption values by one hundred percent for Clause seventeen D, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two E, thirty-seven A, and forty-one C, real estate tax exemptions for qualifying seniors of low income and disabled veterans for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Tom Healy, Precinct five. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Section four of Chapter seventy-three of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six and all subsequent amendments thereby increasing the exemption values by one hundred percent for Clause seventeen D, twenty-two, twenty-two A, twenty-two E, thirty-seven A, and forty-one C, real estate tax exemptions for qualifying seniors of low income and disabled veterans for fiscal year two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any, then? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. All those opposed? Article nineteen, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete $24,000 for carpet, community room, third floor, and fiscal thirteen and add $24,000 for parking lot or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Dan Diamond, Precinct five. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Article Three of the May first, two thousand and twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete $24,000 for carpet on Communication Room, third floor, in fiscal year thirteen and add $24,000 for parking lot.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any, then? This is also a two-thirds vote. So all those opposed? Please raise your hand. All those in favor? Article twenty, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $4,808.75 for zero-turn mower in the DPW Parks Division of capital budget, of the capital budget, and the balance of $3,653, $3,653 for parks fencing in the DPW Parks Division, capital budget, for a total of $8,461.75 to stand-up mower or act on anything relative thereto. Yes.
Jeff Salzke, Precinct two. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May first, two thousand twelve annual town meeting as follows. Delete the balance of $4,808.75 for zero-turn mower in the DPW Parks Division, capital budget, and the balance of $3,653 for parks fencing, the DPW Parks Division, capital budget, for a total of $8,461.75 to stand-up mower.
Is there a second? There is a second. This is also a two-thirds vote, so I'll ask for all those opposed to please raise your hand. Not, yes. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions? Not seeing any, all those opposed? Please raise your hand. All those in favor? Article twenty-one, to see if the town meeting will appropriate a sum of money needed for the additional side wings to the existing Purple Heart Monument in order to accommodate the additional names to be added now and in the future on the Purple Heart Monument or act anything relative thereto. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Hopper, Precinct one. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $5,000 needed for the additional side wings to the existing Purple Heart Monument in order to accommodate the additional names to be added now and in the future on the Purple Heart Monument.
Say it, Bruce. Bruce, say it. If this motion receives an affirmative vote, Article twenty-four will need to be considered nor voted on. This has to be added to your motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Does he agree?
You agree with that, Bruce?
I do, thank you.
Okay. We'll bring it over to Mrs. Gabrie. Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
Paul Plutius, Precinct one. This addition to our Purple Heart Monument is a wonderful one, and it really helps the Veterans Memorial Car Order at Prospect Street. Please pass this proposal.
Yes, sir.
Greg Bowling, Precinct four. I'll ask the question. Article twenty-one and twenty-four seem to be the same thing to me. Is the only difference $500 between the two?
Good answer.
I'd be happy to answer that to the town meeting members. The difference between the two articles was there was a citizens petition in support of the expansion of the monument, and then there was, that one didn't have a dollar amount at the time. Then there was the Veterans Committee that also voted to support it, and they put a dollar amount. So the Veterans Committee worked with those who signed the citizens petition to merge it together and to come up with one figure. Initially, the estimate was $5,500. That was originally brought to the committee in the fall. That estimate was revised on April fourteenth, and there were three estimates. I believe they left the estimates up there for everyone to see. And it appears that the highest estimate is $4,999, and the low one was about $4,200. So it appears it could be done for under $5,000.
Thank you. Mr. Page.
My name is Wayne Page, and I'm in favor of the Purple Heart Monument add-on, but I would personally like to thank Rich Langebin for being the head of the petition and of the committee and to work with him to combine this so we have one article. And not only that, the estimates came in less than what they originally had because of his hard work. And I just want to thank him and hope you please approve this for the town and the people that get the Purple Heart. It means a lot to me as veterans, and it means a lot, hopefully, to our town because you've continually supported the parks that were put up, you continually supported a lot of things doing with veterans. The Purple Heart originally got there by three citizens going out and working, getting that done for free, but now they need your help to keep this going for our Purple Heart recipients. And please vote yes, and thank you.
Any other discussion? Then we're ready for the vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Those opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-two, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half, for the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services, Public Health, for the purpose of maintaining funding for the compost bins to be sold to residents with the expenditure not to exceed $5,000 or act anything relative thereto. Is there a motion?
John Weaver, Precinct two. I move that the town meeting vote to establish a revolving fund pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half, for the Department of Development and Inspeccional Services, Public Health, for the purpose of purchasing compost bins to be sold to residents with expenditures not to exceed $5,000. Is there a second?
Any discussion? Questions? Not seeing any, any of those, all those in favor? Please raise your hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-three. Article twenty-three, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development. That's the one I just read, isn't it? No, okay. Development and Inspeccional Services Building Inspection Division pursuant to the Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half, for the purpose of housing funds remitted to the Town of Auburn as a result of ticketed violations to the building code as outlined in Mass General Laws, Chapter one forty-eight A, Section five, with expenditures not to exceed $20,000 or act on anything relative thereto. Mrs. Ethia.
Ellen Ethia, Precinct five. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. We're not doing Article twenty-four, so we're on Article twenty-five. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $18,000, of which $3,000 is from sewer retained earnings, $10,690.96 from FEMA, two thousand thirteen Snow Reimbursement Act, account number two-one-one-two-nine-zero-one-three, and $4,389.4 cents from general fund revenues to remove old alarm monitoring equipment from the obsolete InTrak alarm system and to install the necessary alarm equipment needed to allow for outside monitoring at various town buildings in the sewer office or act on anything relative thereto. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Mitchell, Precinct three. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $18,000, of which $3,000 is from sewer retained earnings, $10,610.96 from FEMA, two thousand thirteen Snow Reimbursement, account number two-one-one-two-nine-zero-one-three, and $4,389.4 cents from general fund revenues to remove old alarm monitoring equipment from the obsolete InTrak alarm system and install the necessary alarm equipment needed to allow for outside monitoring at various town buildings and the sewer office.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Discussion? Not seeing any, then? All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-six, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500 from the sewer retained earnings to install a new exhaust fan at the Shore Drive Pump Station and to install new ventilation ductwork and exhaust fans at the West Street Pump Station or act anything relative thereto. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500, of which $3,000 is from sewer retained earnings, $10,610.96 from FEMA, two thousand thirteen Snow Reimbursement, account number two-one-one-two-nine-zero-one-three, and $4,389.4 cents from general fund revenues to remove old alarm monitoring equipment from the obsolete InTrak alarm system and install the necessary alarm equipment needed to allow for outside monitoring at various town buildings and the sewer office.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Discussion? Not seeing any, then? All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article twenty-six, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500 from the sewer retained earnings to install a new exhaust fan at the Shore Drive Pump Station and to install new ventilation ductwork and exhaust fans at the West Street Pump Station or act anything relative thereto. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town meeting vote to amend CIP Program Article Three of the May first,
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $28,500 from sewer retained earnings to install a new exhaust fan at the Shore Drive Pump Station and to install new ventilation ductwork and exhaust fan at the West Street Pump Station.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions, discussion? Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Bill Westlin from Precinct 1. My only question is, do we have a bottom line number of what dollar values exist in the earned account?
Mr. Gabenovich?
The retained earnings certification is of June 30 of 2013, and it's certified at the end of every fiscal year, with $778,261.
Anybody else? Okay then, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor, signify by raising their hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 27. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of $30,000 from the sewer retained earnings to install a new sewer grinder at the West Street Pump Station or act anything relative there too. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of $30,000 from sewer retained earnings to install a new sewer grinder at the West Street Pump Station.
Is there a second? There is a second. Are there any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 28. To see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the sewer retained earnings to convert the Burnett Street South, Jerome Ave., and Auburn, Oxford ejecta stations, ejecta stations to the submersible pump stations or act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Dan Diamond, Precinct 5. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Article 29. To see if the town meetings will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the sewer retained earnings for engineering services to develop a CMOM program and a CIP for the new wastewater collection system or act on anything relative there too. Mr. Mitchell?
Last time, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I move that the town meeting vote to appropriate $40,000 from sewer retained earnings for engineering services to develop a CMOM program and CIP for the wastewater collection system.
Is there a second? Any questions, discussion? No questions?
What is a CMOM program?
Mr. Mitchell?
What the CMOM is, it's a study which gives what the system's capacity is, the condition, what maintenance is being done, what should be done, and basically a scorecard on the entire source of...
Anybody else?
Obviously would be to bring it up to...
Any other questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article 30. To see if the town meeting will vote to set the following fees for the town clerk's office to go into effect July 1, 2014. Barial permit fee, $10. Dog licenses for male, female dogs, $20. Business certificates, $60. Business certificate adjustments and withdrawals, $20. Marriage intentions, $40. Affidavit and corrections of vital records, $20. Genealogy searches, $25, or act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Elizabeth Johnson, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to set the following fees for the town clerk's office to go into effect July 1, 2014. Barial permit fee, $10. Dog licenses for male and female dogs, $20. Business certificate, $60. Business certificate adjustments and withdrawals, $20. Marriage intentions, $40. Affidavit and correction of vital records, $20, and genealogy searches, $25.
Is there a second? Are there any questions? Bill will be first. You're first, Bill.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Westlin, Precinct 1. My only question is, it says set the fees. Is these brand-new fees that have not been charged, or are these increased fees? And if they are increased fees, I'd like to know what these increases are. Thank you.
Mrs. Gabrie?
Some of these fees are new fees, and I've been charging, but I didn't have the approval of town meetings, so I have to stop charging. So I want to continue that. The increase in the dog licenses to be in compliance with the state animal control law that says you have to give a discount for spay-neuter, and we're not. We're doing across-the-board $15. So rather than increase that, or, you know, increase male, female, but the rest of them are new. Marriage intentions are now $25, and it's going up to $40. If you go to the city of Worcester, you pay $75. So we're not out of the ball pack as far as what other towns are charging. And the business certificates, we're far lower than most other towns. So this covers the cost of the time that it takes for my staff to perform these services for the public. I hope that answers your question.
Bob Pluticus, Precinct 1. That partially answered one of my questions was what about the spay and neuter dogs? The other question I had is kennel licenses.
The kennel?
Kennel licenses.
They're not going to change.
They stay though.
They're going to stay the same.
Thank you very much.
Yes?
Lila Jess, Precinct 4. On the dog licenses, you're not specifying that it's going to be two separate fees. And what's the additional fee if it's late? Is there an additional fee if they pay late?
Oh, that hasn't changed, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not seeing any then? We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It is a vote. Article 31. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the remaining 200 plus or minus feet of Rethow Street in front of 59 and 61 Rethow Street as a public way. This is a continuation of the previously accepted 1,722 feet of Rethow Street as a public way at the May 7, 2013 town meeting or act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Michael Harris, Precinct 3. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Second? Is there a second? All those in favor, postpone it indefinitely? Raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay. 32. To see if the town meeting will approve the road acceptance of Westview Street, beginning at the northern property line of Number 11 Westview Street to approximately 240 LF South to the end of the cul-de-sac or act on anything relative there too. Is there a motion? Yes, sir.
Phil Joinville, Precinct 4. I move that this article be postponed indefinitely.
Is there a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? It's voted in. Voted, not yet. Article 33. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Karen Avenue in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Karen Avenue would be approximately 400 feet or act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Gina Scog, Precinct 4. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Karen Avenue in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan, a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering, entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Karen Avenue would be approximately 400 feet.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Discussion? Opposed?
Kim Holstrom, Precinct 5. I wonder if the planning board has a recommendation on this article?
Mr. Bruni? Hello. The planning board did recommend this article based on the fact that it is part of an original subdivision from the '70s, and it just failed to complete the process.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it failed to complete the acceptance process, what we're doing now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise their hand. Opposed? It is a vote. Article 34. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Sarah Drive in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by the Cullen Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds as Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Sarah Drive would be approximately 530 feet or to act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Elena Rio, Precinct 2. I move the town meeting vote to accept Sarah Drive in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Sarah Drive would be approximately 530 feet.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, please raise their hand. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 35. To see if the town meeting will vote to accept the remaining portion of Lorna Drive from Station 17+00 to the end, at Station 29+36.85, as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Lorna Drive would be approximately 2,937 feet or act on anything relative there too. Yes, sir?
Scott Taylor, Precinct 5... Oh, Precinct 1 now. I move that the town meeting vote to accept the remaining portion of Lorna Drive from Station 17+0 to the end, Station 29+36.85, as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by Cullen and Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Patch Acres Subdivision, dated March 8, 1973, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 397, Plan 77. The total length of Lorna Drive would be approximately 2,937 feet.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, please signify by raising their hands. All those opposed? It is a vote. Article 36. To see if the town meeting will accept... To see if the town meeting will vote to accept Oakheart Road in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by James B. Callock, Registered Land Surveyor, entitled Oakheart Road Estates, Property in Auburn, Mass., dated April 1967, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 324, Plan 84. The total length of Oakheart Road would be approximately 2,754 feet or act on anything relative there too. Yes?
Amy Kennedy, Precinct 1. I move that the town meeting vote to accept Oakheart Road in its entirety as a public way as shown on a plan prepared by James B. Callock, Registered Land Surveyor, entitled Oakheart Road Estates, Property in Auburn, Mass., dated April 1967, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 324, Plan 84. The total length of Oakheart Road would be approximately 2,754 feet.
Is there a second? There is a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Daniel Logis, Precinct 4. I recently drove over that road, well, four and a half hours ago, and I was just wondering who's responsible for that road once we take it. There's no berms, there's no drainage, there's no sidewalks, there's not even a second coat. There's only a base coat of pavement. That's going to cost the taxpayers of the Town of Auburn a lot of money.
Mr. Bruni?
Mr. Moderator, this is a road that was part of a subdivision, as noted in the warrant article, that began construction in the early to mid-'80s. The developer has recently indicated to the planning board that he will not be doing any further work. So the planning board went through the surety seizure process, completed in January of this year. We seized an amount of about $31,000 that in 1985 was determined to be adequate to complete the construction of the road. For whatever reason, the developer did not complete the construction of the road at that point. Through the seizure process, the town becomes the responsible entity for the road. Thus, the acceptance of the road allows for the expenditure of additional funds to complete the road.
So what's this going to cost the taxpayers of the Town of Auburn to complete this road?
That I cannot say. And what the reality of it is, is the developer either... We either seize the money now, or the developer continues to hold on to it, the road continues to deteriorate, and we seize the money when he passes. So if he's indicating he's not going to expend his own further funds, we have no vehicle to force him other than to take what funds we have in the surety account.
$31,000 probably is not even going to cover the drainage system, correct?
I would assume it probably will not.
So you're talking a couple hundred thousand to do this road correctly, drainage, berms, sidewalks?
I'm not going to speculate. I'm not an engineer. I don't have a construction estimating background, so I'm not going to...
Excuse me. Maybe Mr. Coyle can answer this question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Coyle, DPW Director. As the town planner indicated, there's approximately $31,000 available to perform maintenance on the roadway. I would anticipate there would be an additional $70,000 to $100,000 of town funds to pulverize the road correctly and do the necessary drainage work.
Thank you.
And nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Greg Bulling, Precinct 4. I guess I would just like to get a sense from the engineer what the priority of this road would be, what's its condition, is this an immediate need, or would this go in the sort of pool of roads in town that need some repair? sort of pool of roads in town that need some repair and be part of the reconstruction program?
Through the moderator, I can tell you, we've started reviewing all the town roads once again this spring, as we do every year. And I can tell you, there's definitely a significant need for improvement for Oakheart Road. So once it's accepted, I can tell you that it will not go before other roads that are currently town roads that are in this condition. But I would, once accepted by the town, consider it for a project if it is in worse condition than our currently approved roads. But I wouldn't put it before another road that is in equally poor condition.
Steve Simonian, floor, second. I have a question about this because it's come to my attention, and unfortunately, I haven't had time to go and look, research, but I was told that the town had the authority to raise the bond consistently over that period of time as the construction of the development was in progress. If that bylaw does exist, my question is, why did we not do that during that period of time to ensure that if such a time came, as we have today, we're forced to seize the bond, we would not then have the proper amount to cover that? So I'm not sure who can answer that, and I'm certainly going to look into the bylaws myself, but like I said, I haven't had time, so I'm just curious. If that's the case, why wasn't it done?
Mr. Moderator, I think that going back 30 some-odd years to when this subdivision was under construction, I can't speak to who was on professional staff at that time or who was on the volunteer planning board, so I couldn't begin to speculate on their reasoning for not upping the bond. Again, the last time the bond was addressed was in the mid-'80s. The board accepted the, I want to say, the first 1,200 or 1,400 feet of the road as constructed to adequate standard. In the time that I've been employed by the town, this has been a completed project to the degree that the majority of the homes were up. The developer has not approached the town until within the last year, and within the last year essentially said, "I'm done. I'm not doing any further work. I want to turn over my bond." So we went through the seizure process. The preceding 25 or so years, I am not going to speculate on why it wasn't addressed or what the reasoning for it was. The current subdivision rules and regulations require completion of roadwork on new subdivisions within 24 months. At that point, in the process of applying for an extension, the board can review the surety. As far as what it said previously, I can't say. We can't, my understanding of the way Mass. General Law is written is we can't go to the developer and say, "You have to give us more money now." If they come and ask for modification, extension, or otherwise, we can at that point redress the bond, but we can't just of our own volition...
Thank you.
...do a standard modification.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, in the back?
Dan Kopenter, Precinct Five. This road was, when I was on the planning board, from '96 to 2013. When Chris Rass was here, we actually tried to make a deal with the developer at the time, who was indicating then that he was nearing completion. And despite Mr. Rass's work and the planning board's work, we could never come to an agreement. So as the planner said, the bylaw, it isn't a bylaw, it's a subdivision regulation, did not allow the board that I served on, or the current board now has this authority, to up the bond. So it's not an action or an inaction of a board. We did try to do it. The town did try and deal with this over 10 years ago, but it didn't come to fruition. So that's just some additional information, and I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Kopenter. I don't know if we're going to get a better answer, Mr. Simonian, but go ahead.
I'd just make the point, if this was able to happen, does anyone know who would have had the authority if it's not the planning board? And why, you know, again, why was it not done? I mean, this, Mr. Lajest brings up a great point, and, you know, this is now on, I realize what you're saying, we can't go back and accommodate the sins of the past, but at the same time, this is about protecting the taxpayers to a degree, and the point Mr. Lajest made is very valid. We're on the hook for a fairly substantial amount of money that maybe could have been mitigated, and I'm not sure why it wasn't.
Mr. Hopper?
Two questions. How many households does this affect? In other words, how many houses are we talking about on Oakheart Road? And then the second question that's come to my mind now, because there are a lot of questions, is whether or not town council's been involved in this. But it just seems like this is almost premature to me, till we have more answers, come before
I don't have the exact house count. 2,700 feet of road, it's an RA district. I would say you're probably in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 houses. And town council does review the warrant. As far as any additional, I don't want to speak for what his involvement was. I mean, the planning board followed the standard surety seizure process. Without acceptance, the town can spend the $30,000, but we can't spend, I believe it's a $500 limit per year, and I defer that to the DPW director on whether that's the actual number.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the $500 per linear foot is what the town can spend to maintain private roads.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. We have one more question, I hope, or the last one, I hope.
Doug Nelson, Precinct Two. Just curious why this one was brought up at this time, and are there other roads like this that could be brought up in the future? You know, it would be nice to have this as some sort of inventory. I know there's been street inventories done, but is this going to be something that we'll see again and again, and how much would that all add up to? Or are there other roads that were overlooked in the past with similar conditions? Thank you.
Mr. Coyle?
Mr. Moderator, I can tell you that there are other roads, not necessarily similar to Oakheart, but similar to Lorna and Sarah and Karen subdivisions that were constructed years ago. They were completed, houses were built and sold. There's no bonds remaining. And the roads are getting to a point where they deteriorated. I would assume that people who bought the houses at the time assumed that they were town roads, but for whatever reason, back in the '70s, it never went through the acceptance process. So there are more roads that are similar to Sarah and Lorna and Karen. In my review, I've only seen up to today, probably two or three additional at this point that are in need of repair, but there are more. But similar to Oakheart, I don't know unless the town planner is aware of any. I'm not aware of any that, in that situation, there's a bond that still exists from back in the '80s.
I think Oakheart is the only one that I'm aware of that's as old as it is and still holds a bond. There are other subdivisions that exist currently and have bonds, but they're much more contemporary, and the bonds are in an amount that is in modern estimation, not from 30 or 35 years ago.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
No, Mr. Page, no. Mr. Page, no. He was not, he's not speaking here. He's not, he wasn't speaking. He wasn't speaking. Wayne Page again. You know, we talk about what was done, what wasn't done, and when it's going to be fixed. The people on Oakheart Road are suffering because there was a problem with the town and with the contractor. They pay taxes. I know it's going to cost some money to fix it, but these are our people, this is our town, and, you know, we need to fix these roads. Maybe mistakes were made many, many, many years ago, but if we don't correct them, it's going to cost more, and there could be more time and more problems. I had spoken at the selectmen's meeting the other night, and the thing is, we need to serve our people. This is what our budgets are for, this is what we need to do. We need to take care of our taxpayers in the town. And just because there was things, people had dropped the ball many, many, many years ago, and now that the people that are in office and the people that are dealing with this stuff are bringing it forward so we can straighten this out, and then in the meantime, hopefully, they will raise the bonds, and, I mean, they seem to be putting their best foot forward with this road stuff, and hopefully, you'll support it. Thank you.
Chris Heroyan of Oakheart Road, Precinct Two. Please don't hold us, you know, hostage for this. The longer we put this off, it's just going to cost more. There's 40 houses paying all our taxes. We did nothing wrong. Some things weren't done in the past, I get it. But just don't hold those 40 houses at bay just because someone else 20 years ago or 10 years ago didn't do their job. We got to, you know, fix it now. And like you said, where I live now, I don't have any sidewalks, I have one coat, not even a second coat. He's right. I just urge you to support the article.
Sure. In the back?
Do you have a gentleman's question answered? How many houses do you want?
He said 40 to 50. He didn't have an exact amount.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
About 35 to 40 percent of the road was completed and accepted by the planning board and the bond released for that section. So I would say approximately 60 percent of the road has a single coat, so that would be somewhere in the 25-ish to 28 number of houses.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that addresses the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, also an interesting point to make you aware of is that if we do accept this, it does allow the town to begin receiving Chapter 90 funds as well to maintain this roadway. So if we wait and put this off five years, that's, you know, ultimately, at some point, I suspect this road would become accepted, and the sooner we do accept it, the sooner we start receiving funds from the state to put towards the funding.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. We ready for the vote?
Oh, yes.
You spoke twice. He spoke twice. That's... No. No. Let's have the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? It's a vote. Thank you. Number 37. To see if the town meeting will vote to amend the balance of the appropriation approved under Article 17 of the May 1st, 2003 annual town meeting, from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Account, $1,025 for replacement windows at the cemetery office building and tree removal, or act on anything relative thereto. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Brent Anderson, Precinct Five. I move the town meeting vote to amend the balance of the appropriation approved under Article 17 of the May 1st, 2003 annual town meeting, from the Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Account, $1,025 for replacement of windows in the cemetery office building to tree removal.
Is there a second? Any questions? Discussion? Not seeing any then? All those in favor, raise their hand. All those opposed? It is a vote.
Before we move to dissolve, could we have applause and appreciation for the great job that Chad has done this evening?
Take a motion to dissolve?
Second?
Second? All those in favor?